Reading and Language Arts in addition to her passion, social studies. She loved having kids create projects in all subjects and allowed students to demonstrate their learning in many different ways. Jean saw a great need in the area of geography. Students were often heard singing the five themes of geography song, and she prepared students to participate in the Geography Bowl each year. Jean made a difference in the lives of her students, and one way she was able to enhance student learning was by writing and receiving grants. She was able to provide many unique experiences to Ripon students such as working with professional authors and experiencing the culture of other places through music and food. She probably has the record for the most written and received by a Ripon teacher. Jean, thanks for your dedication and the difference you have made in lives of Ripon students. We appreciate your creativity, work ethic, and contributions to Grade Six and the team. We wish you a healthy, happy days on your bike, at your lake, and hopefully at Packer, Brewer, and Badger games. From the Sixth Grade Team and all the teachers and staff from the middle school, congratulations, Jean, on your retirement, and good luck.
Thank you, thank you, Rick.
You're welcome. Next is Bill Nelson. And this is, Bill, this is some thoughts from Christina Mincho and Sandy Pulcin. We've had the pleasure to work with Bill for nearly 20 years. During this time, we've observed Bill inspire and instruct students to become literate music readers and performers. The music repertoire Bill selected for his students each year challenged and inspired them to grow as young musicians. It takes a remarkable teacher to have the patience and knowledge to start at least 60 students each year on an instrument and just a few months have these students performing in a concert. Bill is not only a fantastic teacher, but he has an incredible gift to compose and arrange music for his concert bands, meeting the individual needs while providing group success when the students play the song together. Bill understood where the students were and what they needed to master a new skill. He composed and arranged the music so all would experience success and attain a high level of achievement. Over the course of Bill's teaching career, he added jazz band into the school day curriculum. This additional class provided motivated students the opportunity to learn more challenging music notes, rhythms, and addition allowed students to learn a second instrument if they so desired. This jazz band program has soared in the last few years because of the addition of jazz band as a class during the school day and one that has brought nori to the Ripon Area School District. From behind the scenes, we have personally watched Bill as he planned and prepared for concerts plus solo ensemble festival. He spent numerous hours outside the school day making sure that each performance was the best that it could possibly be. He also provided enrichment opportunities for his students by taking them to events such as the UW Stevens Point Jazz Festival. Bill was always looking for ways to improve as an educator. He attended conferences and workshops with music instructors who are leaders in the field of instrumental music education. In addition to this, Bill has been a saxophone coach for the Wisconsin State Honors Jazz Ensemble. As part of the State Honors Jazz Team, Bill was able to work hand in hand with the top jazz educators in the nation. In his spare time, Bill has been an adjunct music instructor for Ripon College, teaching clarinet and saxophone lessons to college students for the past several years. Bill Nelson is a high-quality educator that inspired generations of musicians in the Ripon Area School District who are so fortunate to have Bill as their teacher. We wish Bill a retirement filled with major intervals, rising pitches, and many memorable codas. That was from Christina Mincho and Sandy Pulcin. And again, Bill, congratulations on your retirement from all the staff at Ripon Middle School. I'm going to give them a standing applause here. I'll even stand up in my house. Thanks, guys. Been a pleasure working with you.
Thanks, Rick.
I can go next for Mary and Barb. So I find this so hard to do because how do you sum up 30 years, 36 years into a small paragraph to express your gratitude? So I'm going to do my best, Mary and Barb. Mary Preston has served the students and families of Ripon Area School District for 30 years as a first-grade teacher. In the five years that I have worked with Mary, I have learned that there is nothing she won't try for our kids. First grade is no joke. It is probably one of the hardest grades to teach because there is so much growth physically and academically to take place in one year, but there's still so little and needing so much support. Mary is the epitome of a first-grade teacher. She has energy, structure, kindness, and understanding. There is nothing Mary wouldn't do if it meant helping a child succeed. Mary's had a few students that were tricky to figure out at first, but she remained open-minded, innovative, and positive through it all. One of my favorite stories about Mary is actually a recent one. Our staff knew the importance of maintaining connections for our students during this time of distance learning. Well, Mary went above and beyond and recorded a song for her students with each of their names in it and sent it out to them. Mary and her huge heart will surely be missed by many parents and students, but especially by the staff at Barlow Park and Journey. Congratulations, Mary.
Yay. Thank you, Tanya.
Thank you, Tanya.
Barb Splitgaber. Barb has served the students and families of Ripon Area School District for 36 years. Barb is exactly who one would picture when describing a kindergarten teacher: warm, loving, nurturing, creative, musical, and even sometimes magical. She truly looks at her students, past and present, as her own kids. One of my favorite events was when Mrs. Splitgaber would read versions of The Gingerbread Man to her students in the winter. After reading a few variations, the class would get the opportunity to make real gingerbread. And of course, while the students let him cool, the gingerbread man would escape and leave clues throughout the school for them to find him in their snack at the end. A lot has changed in education over the years, especially this year, but Barb has been willing to take these things, these changes, in stride and keep our kids' best interests at the forefront. She's a quick learner and willing to try new things. She cares about their growth academically, of course, but also their growth as young people. Even though this last quarter of the school year has been hard for us due to distance learning, Barb has kept maintaining and making and maintaining connections with families as her main goal. She has connected through Meet, Zoom, social media, telephone, early in the morning, late in the evening, on the weekends, because she knows it is important for the kids and for herself. When one pops into one of her Google Meets, they witness the magic that is Mrs. Splitgaber. She radiates positivity and enthusiasm and lets our kids and their families know that they're going to be all right. Mrs. Splitgaber will surely be missed by many parents and students, but is spared by the staff at Barlow and Journey. Congratulations, Barb. I would like to say that I am losing two veteran teachers who have consistently modeled what it means to be kids first. Yet what really makes my heart sad is that they were robbed of their lasts. I felt inspired when looking at Barb's Flat Stanley-esque cutout and thought maybe we could still give you a part of the experience without actually breaking the social distancing rules. So Jolene, if I can present my screen, I would like to present to you the lasts. So Barb and Mary, I present to you your lasts from this year. Last concert. Last trip to South Woods. Last assembly. Last touch-a-truck. Last late start. Last recess duty. Last lunch duty, everyone's favorite. Last field trip. Last senior walk. Last visit from the fire department. Last carnival. And last staff picture. While this might be the end of your teaching career, we know we are not saying goodbye. We are just saying see ya, because we know you will continue. You just stay connected, think of us, support us, and even check in on us. Once a Ripon Tiger, always a Ripon Tiger. Thank you, ladies.
Okay, thanks, everybody. And just for you guys, I'm just going to be the bright flower right here. I taught a lot of your kids, and I have a list, but my eyes are full of tears and I can't read it.
Randy, I think it'd be you because we do not have any retirees at MPQ this year.
I can jump in for Connie.
All right, awesome, thank you.
I just want to say congratulations, Connie. I worked with Connie for the past 20 years. She's been in the Media Center for 21 years. Every time I've come into Media Center, she is smiling and just happy to assist the students that are in there and the staff. She's taken on any role or support we've asked from her over that time, and I have to thank Connie personally, she's really helped me in my role. Every time I have a question or need to know something, she's jumped in to kind of give me assistance. So that is a really big thing for me, and she's become not just a coworker but a really good friend, and I've been so happy that I've been able to see Connie the last couple of weeks. She's popped in here to help out with the custodians and some of the jobs they have going on here, so it's been great to see her. The only thing that I'm sorry about is that it ends this way without her having to see the students. I know that was one of the bright sides of her day. She always loves seeing the students and having the students come in, so thanks so much, Connie.
Thanks, Trevor.
And I just, can you hear me, Ms. Randy? I just want to say Connie, Connie is a sweet, caring person, loves to work with children in the Media Center, in the middle school and high school. She is innovative, resourceful, and an asset to all the staff. She has seen many changes throughout the years but always had a great attitude, and anytime you're in the Media Center, she always has a smile on her face. She's a welcoming presence. Kids gravitate toward her. She's respected by students and staff, and she will be greatly missed. Connie, congratulations on your years of service, and best of luck in your retirement.
We have a little technical difficulty. So board members, listen up. I'm going to end the meeting, and then I'm going to restart the meeting, so you will need to rejoin. Okay? I'm going to end the meeting now, and then we'll restart the meeting. Okay, board members, you should now be able to rejoin the meeting. And after everybody rejoins the meeting, we will be on Item Six, Written Comments, and I will ask Jolene if we have received any written comments. Okay, it doesn't sound like we have received any written comments, so we will move forward to Item Seven, Visitors' Comments. Jolene, do we have any indication of visitors who would like to comment on any agenda items? Okay, hearing.
Sorry, Gary, I couldn't get my microphone on mic. Do not have any comments, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're now on Item Number Eight, Adoption or Adjustment of the Agenda's Order of Items. Are there any, is there any need to adjust the agenda tonight?
I don't think so, Gary.
Okay, we're going to move to announcements. And Superintendent Whitrock, if you could read announcements of contributions to the district.
Absolutely. We had a $100 donation from Barb Schultz for underprivileged students to help assist with paying for meals. Betsy Blazek donated $250 through the Ripon Education Foundation's annual scholarship fund, as well as Marilyn Callen donating $500. Peter and Emily Sensenbrenner donated $1,000 through that scholarship fund, and Lois Quinney donated $1,000 through that fund, so we're grateful for that. And even though our students weren't able to be out and actually canvass the community as they usually do, we did a letter-writing campaign, and our donors across the city and our alumni were very generous, and we were able to offer the same scholarships that we have in the past. So thank you to everyone for their contributions.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, donors. It is very much appreciated. We'll now move to the report from the Ripon High School Student Representative. And Theo, if you're with us, what's going on?
Gary, I did see that Theo was here earlier, but I also saw him leave, so I don't know that he's on right now.
Okay. We'll, perhaps we'll be able to circle back to the, to Theo's report. Okay. Let's see if we can move forward. I'm now having trouble moving us forward. Here we go. We are now at Item 11, 7.1, Considering Approval of Item 7.2 through 7.7 of the Consent Agenda. Could I have a motion to approve?
Sorry, Gary, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a second, this is Tom.
Thank you. So was that Betsy and Tom?
That was Nicole, that was not Betsy.
Thank you, Betsy. Sorry, Nicole. Okay, I'll call for the vote.
Did you ask for any items that anybody wanted to remove from the consent agenda?
I didn't, but I guess I can do that.
I can't find the consent agenda. I'm struggling to get through things and see everything that's on the consent agenda at this time. Was that where Ingalls Field, was it in the consent agenda, or was that after the consent agenda?
I believe it was part of the consent agenda. And I will, let's see. Okay, so there are, it is 7.7, and the, there are two memos attached to the consent, to this motion. There's the agreement and the payment agreement for the turf.
I'd like to discuss it separately.
Very good. Then, Jolene, could you remove Item 7.7 from the consent agenda?
Yep, give me just a second to make that adjustment, please.
I will take us back to 7-0, or 7-1, rather.
Okay, I have adjusted that, and you should now, if you, you might have to refresh your screens, but it should be under 8.0, Items Moved From the Consent Agenda as Item 8.1.
That's how it appears to me. Now I, let's revisit Nicole's motion and Tom's second to vote on the consent agenda. Are there any other items? I guess before we do that, are there any other items that somebody wants removed? Now I need one more vote to approve the consent agenda.
And Gary, I'm struggling a little bit to get in there and do that.
Okay.
Yeah, it is not syncing up for me. There we go. We're a little slow over here tonight. Thank you for your patience.
No worries. Okay. Thank you very much, everybody, and thanks for bearing with us through our technical Okay, well, that will bring us to the new, what is now Item 8.1, Considering Approval of the Ingalls Field Agreements. Could I, let's put the motion on the floor, and then let's, let's have the discussion that we would like to have.
Gary, this is John, I'll make a motion.
John, thank you. Second?
Second by Tom.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, it's now open for discussion. David, perhaps you have something in particular you'd like to discuss?
Yeah, I'd like to know exactly what the situation is. My understanding is that the college has not seen the language that we're voting on, but that we're doing this so that work could start next week, is that correct?
The language, the college has worked back and forth with us with this, the language in this agreement, and the next phase of it was sent. We've been going, we've been going back and forth, and so we've worded it in a way that we can start tomorrow, because we need to complete this project by the end of June. While we have our portion of the funds from the endowment that was set up, we're paying for the college's portion of the funds and the financing that we're providing them through savings this year. And if we don't complete the project by the end of the year, those dollars would go into fund balance or, and that could impact our state aid, or it would have to go into Fund 46, which then it would be tied up until 2024. So we just wanted to word the motion so that it could move forward, and we're not waiting on a college signature.
But there's, but there are no difficulties expected with the final approval from both sides?
I don't anticipate any, but we've been going back and forth. The agreement that we had previously was, you know, it was pretty old language in the contract, and that has slowed up the process just because we're putting in, you know, more, more recent language, just in terms of termination of the contract and just all of those kinds of things. And that really has caused us to go back and forth to talk about, you know, what, what would cause us to be able to terminate the agreement on either side. We didn't have language in regarding like logos, those kind of things, so those were added, and we've been going back and forth. But my understanding from communication with Zach and with Jim Foley, their attorney, as they work with us and our attorney, is just interest in moving forward and securing another 20-year agreement. I think our, our process for actually utilizing the food, the field has been very successful over the past 20 years, and I don't think we're looking to really do anything differently in terms of how we use the field or who's on it, but we're anxious to get that turf installed before the end of our year here.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I have one question, Gary.
Yeah.
In looking at Section 6 under Maintenance, the language was struck at the end about keeping consistent with the instructions of the manufacturer or seller of the new sports turf, and I was just wondering why that was struck.
Because it's actually listed with, the specifics of it are listed within the agreement.
Okay.
It's actually spelled out, and it is. Is it the fluffing and the annual, I gotta find it here. The deep, the annual deep grooming of the artificial field as well as the weekly fluffing. So the exact language is in the contract rather than referring to an agreement that would have to be further referenced.
Okay, that makes sense.
Did I see that we lost Gary there temporarily?
That's what it looks like.
It looks like we might have, yeah. Yeah, I don't know if you're able to vote, or...
I think we have an option.
Okay, it looks like at least one person has submitted their vote.
The vote is before the meeting, on the template. Can everybody see it?
Yeah, I think everybody can see it, and it looks like everyone's voted except Gary.
Okay. It looks like we just lost Nate, too, in the meeting.
I was telling Jolene before we got started that internet has been a little bit of a struggle today in this house, and it may be in other households as well.
Any other discussion on this motion? My technical difficulties continue to hound me.
You've all voted, we're just waiting for you.
Okay. Okay. It appears that the motion is passed unanimously. Again, my, my apologies. Okay. Thank you, everyone. Now we're on, this is just not working well for me at the moment. Let's think it. Okay. Okay. I believe we're now considering approval of transfer of professional staff. Jolene, am I on the right? Item 10.1?
9.1, Gary.
Okay, that's what I thought. I am so sorry again. Okay. Yikes. Okay. New business. We're first going to discuss the whether we should approve the trail easement agreement with the city of Ripon. Can I have a motion to put this on the floor?
This is David, so moved.
Thank you, David.
This is John, I'll second.
Okay. Um, we do have a tech, yet another technical difficulty, although David has clearly joined the meeting and the control panel shows. We do have a problem with David not showing up in the meeting.
Gary, his votes are being recorded, though. I'm not sure why his name is not up in the display. I think it has something to do with the setup with the software company. I'll have to talk with them tomorrow. But I did notice that a couple of minutes ago, and I went back and looked in the recording of the votes, and David's votes are being recorded.
Okay, so it's very strange. I just can't record then that David moved this motion.
Right, I, I've got that, I have a kind of a backup document that I always fill out for voting and I do have that recorded.
Very good.
So the minutes will reflect that.
Thank you, Jolene.
Sure.
Okay, so it, the motion to approve the trail easement agreement has been moved and seconded. Are there any, is there any discussion or questions? We did talk about this at length last month. But if there are any, if there's any discussion, take it away.
I do have a couple of questions, Gary.
Yes.
So the timeline with this was that the city should, would find out by the end of summer if they would in fact receive the grant money, correct?
I, yeah, I'm not 100% certain when they're finding out.
Yeah, I don't know about that, Nate.
Okay.
What's your concern?
Well, one of my concerns is that the land right now is currently utilized by FFA. In the past, agriculture students and FFA members have used that land as test plots with the crops that get planted every year by buck or zay. And I guess my only concern is that right now there are currently crops in the ground, there is corn that has been planted. So I was just curious if the city was in fact mindful of that. Because if they weren't in fact to get the grant money in August, I wasn't sure how fast they would want to move forward on this, but that is something that should be taken in consideration with this. And based off of our past conversations too, and in some of the conversations that I have had with our agriculture instructor, it came as a bit of a surprise that this was happening, and I just believe that it's important that we do, as we continue to move forward, have all stakeholders at the table as this will impact the way that that land is going to be utilized in the future.
We certainly can, as we receive updates. I can tell you that it was just prior to the board meeting last month when the city reached out to us. We weren't aware that they were, they, they had this in the works. So absolutely, we can continue to do that and, and make sure we're keeping everyone informed. Very good point.
And thank you, Mary, and we do realize that it is only 30 feet, so it's not going to drastically affect the total of 40 acres there, but still, it is a change.
Yep, and if you're doing research, that, that could be the part that you are messing up, so, thank you.
Any other issues to discuss with regard to this agreement with the city? Okay, let's please vote. And the easement agreement is approved unanimously. Thank you very much. The next item of new business is to consider approval of the special mission director job description. The job description was provided by the administration as an attachment. Are there any questions about this job description? Remember that this is a, a part of an ongoing district administration effort to make sure we have job descriptions for every position and that they are updated. So I guess, let us, let's have somebody put this motion on the floor.
This is John, Gary, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, John.
I'll second. This is Nicole.
Thank you, Nicole. Okay, now we could, if there is any, if there are any questions about this job description, don't be shy. Okay, I will call for the vote. And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next, another job description of pupil services director. Could I have a motion for this? For this item?
This is John, I'll make a motion.
Gary, I'll second.
Thank you, gentlemen. Again, the description, it was provided as an attachment. Are there any questions with regard to the pupil services, pupil service director job description? Hearing no questions, I will call for the vote. Job description is approved. Thank you very much. It was approved unanimously. Our next, our next item is a job description for our assistant high school principal. I would like to have somebody move this item, please.
Tom makes the motion.
Thank you, Tom.
Nicole will second Tom's motion.
Nicole, thank you. Are there any questions about the job description for assistant principal as outlined in the attachment?
This is David. I have, I have a question. I just wonder what previous administrative experience means.
In the job description? That's our preference, is if they've had a previous administrative experience, but it's, it's a preference, not a requirement. Because we're not sure if we would find a candidate that had that previous experience.
Okay, I, I wondered because it seemed to me that in the past, it's frequently been kind of an entry level administrative position for people in the district. And I think that, I would suggest that it stayed a little bit more clearly that previous administrative experiences is desired, but not absolutely necessary.
Sure, sure, we can make that, make that change. Good point. And we have had a number of individuals that have come up through our, our staff within the district for positions, and that has been exciting.
Thank you for that suggestion, David. And Mary, you're going to adjust that accordingly, correct?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or thoughts about the assistant high school principal job description? Okay, let's, let's vote. Let's see, I lost my focus there. Nate, are you with us? Here we go. Thank you very much. That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
It's, boy, what an interesting night we're having. Okay. Uh, we're now on to the next item of new business. And that is to approve a math department curricular materials request for catalyst math. I'm sorry, I said that wrong. Catalyst math department request for curricular materials. Would somebody care to move this item?
This is David. I'm happy to move it, but if it causes more problems for Jolene, I'll let somebody else do it.
No, no, so I, Jolene, you can record David and I will put myself down for this, to keep the software happy, which is what I...
Great, thank you.
Yep, okay, now we just need a second.
This is Nicole, I'll second.
Thank you, Nicole. Okay, so we have a memo describing the materials adoption request and a quote for the chosen material. Are there any questions that anybody has before we vote on this? We, I think Chrissy explained this motion pretty well last month. Okay, hearing no questions, I will call for the vote. Thank you, everyone. That motion passes unanimously. The next item of new business is a similar motion for, again, from the math department of Ripon High School this time. Could I have somebody put this motion on the floor, please?
This is John, I'll make a motion.
I think I heard Tom first.
And John will second.
Thank you, John. Okay. The math materials recommendation memo is included with the motion. I believe Chrissy explained it last month, but if there are other questions or comments, now is the time. Okay, let's, I'm gonna call for the vote on this item. This item passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item of new business is to consider approval of a salary increase. Or, and the the motion is to approve, well, the motion would be to approve a 2% salary increase for each employee group. So I am looking for a member to put this on the, on the floor.
I will make a motion for the 2% increase.
I will second that motion.
Thank you, Nicole. Okay. The memos explaining the rationale for the motion are included in the motion. Is there any discussion or questions for Jonah? Or Mary, for that matter? Okay, hearing none, I will call for the vote. This motion for the salary increase passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Gary, just for the record, because mine's not recorded on what you're looking at, I abstained.
Ah, yes, thank you. I should have remembered that, and it's not, it wasn't recorded that way. So Jolene, make, please make sure that Dave's, David's vote was abstention.
Yes, it has been recorded that he abstained on that vote.
Okay, and I might have misread, because I am, I'm having challenges tonight, so I apologize. Okay, our next item of new business is to consider approval of replacing the interactive whiteboards. I believe this is in Murray Park, if I'm remembering correctly. So would somebody please make this motion and we can discuss if necessary?
Tom makes the motion to approve.
Tom, thank you. Tom, thank you.
John will second.
Well, thank you, John. Okay, are the the memos and the memo explaining the rationale for the proposal is included, and the quotes are included. Believe Travis is available to answer any questions that a board member might have.
This isn't really a question. I just want to make sure I I totally understand, since I would have missed any other discussion before. These are the whiteboards in Murray Park Quest, not the entire building?
Yes, Murray Park Quest.
Okay. And we are able to afford them because of the savings of the one good side of the pandemic?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay.
And of course, there's, as you know, a never-ending need to replace technology after a certain amount of time. And these smart boards are no exception.
David, just to clarify, it is for the entire building. I'm not sure if that's how you asked it or not.
Okay, just it says Murray Park Quest, and I'm never sure what that means.
Right, so it's the entire building. Everywhere where there is a current smart board would be replaced with an interactive panel.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Renee, for that clarification. Are there any other questions with regard to this proposal?
Gary, I have a question. Will we be recycling the old whiteboards, or how will we be disposing of them?
The old whiteboards are eight to 10 years old, and we will be recycling them. The projectors, most of those are quite old, so we'll probably recycle those as well, but we do have some that we bought as replacements for ones that had died. We'll reuse those in locations that have older projectors currently.
Great.
Excellent question. Excellent answer. Any further discussion about the whiteboard replacement? Hearing none, let's let's vote. This motion passes unanimously.
Gary, this is Travis here, too. I just want to send a thanks to Brian and his maintenance crew for offering to do the installation that really helped with the pricing, and it's much appreciated.
Thank you, Travis. And thank you, Brian and staff and crew. Okay. Our next action under new business is 9-9. Approve, considering approval of the preliminary 2020 virtual summer school staffing proposal. There is a memo discussing this, and before we do so, I'd like somebody to move this motion.
Gary, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Nate.
John will second.
Thank you, John. Okay, so in the motion, we have a pretty, pretty granular plan for our virtual summer school staffing. Are there any questions or concerns to the board?
Just to remind me, when will families actually register? I know they're doing it online. When when will we actually find out how many of them are doing summer school?
David, I can speak to that. We actually have the signups out already, and many families have already begun to sign their students up. I want to say, after being open for only a day, we had approximately 15 students per section at the elementary already. So we certainly are seeing an interest from our families, which is really exciting to see.
Thank you, Chrissy. That's fantastic. Are there any other questions with regard to the summer school plans? Hearing none, I call for the vote. The vote, the motion passes unanimously, and I thank everyone for what must have been fairly challenging to put that together.
It was very challenging right before the state approved a virtual summer school option, because it wouldn't have allowed us to connect with our students. So we're very thankful that 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 approval went through.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Our next item of new business is looking at the revised 2019-2020 budget. Let's put the motion on the floor, and we can ask Jonah if our ask, we can address questions about the budget to Jonah if so desired.
Gary, I'll make a motion. This is John.
Thank you, John.
Tom seconds.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, motion is up for discussion. Does anybody have any questions for Jonah or Mary? Quite, this also must have been quite challenging. It's always challenging.
I was just going to say, it wasn't too bad to prepare this, but it's just something that I think we should do going forward, just in the spring to bring forward the revised budget. You know, the board approves, you know, a bunch of changes throughout the year. And then in the spring, we really should look at what these account codes are so that we can submit it again to the state, and they can give us better estimates for aid in July.
And it looks like it's about a $300,000 change overall.
Right, yep. New revenue and then new new expenses to match that.
Yeah. Thank you, Jonah. Okay, if there are no other questions, I will call for the vote. This vote passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Now it's time for item 10.1, which is considering approval of professional staff, transfer of professional staff assignments. Would anybody care to move the motion for these transfers? For the for the transfer?
This is David. I'll move the voluntary transfer of special education teacher Melissa Keys.
Thank you.
John will second.
John, thank you. Are there any questions about Ms. Keys' transfer? Hearing none. Hearing none, I will call for the vote. This motion is approved unanimously. Next, we have a motion to hire two professional staff. I'd like somebody to move this, please.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Nate.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Nicole. Are there any questions about the hiring of Ms. Lee and Ms. Schneider? I'll call for the vote. Those hirings are approved unanimously. Okay, we are at item 10.3. Considering approval of the part-time teacher contracts. Memo is is included, and I would like somebody to move this item, please.
John, I'll make a motion.
I think Dave wanted to make that, so we'll give that to Dave. David?
John can second.
Thank you, John. Are there any questions or comments about the part-time teacher contract proposal, recommendation? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you. That concludes our new business. Thank you very much, everybody. We now move to item 11.1 Legislative Updates from the Superintendent. Mary, if you have anything for us?
You know, I think the biggest things are some of what we're seeing in terms of maintaining our school closure of the actual building through June 30. We've had some updates just regarding what's happening with summer school, which we were able to approve today. And you've had a chance to see some of the plans in the works for ending our school year in terms of closing out at the elementary schools, middle school, as well as the high school, getting students to come in and pick up their materials, as well as return books and computers while practicing social distancing to keep our students in their cars and keep everybody safe. And Mr. Hatlen and his team have done a wonderful job of working very carefully to honor our seniors and their parents and their wishes in terms of ending the school year, celebrating graduation here at the end of a 13-year journey for our students, while also keeping the option open to have a face-to-face graduation, assuming that's possible here yet this summer. We are waiting to hear more, just in terms of what happens with the return to school. But as you found out today, we're looking at a virtual summer school starting here in June, and then keeping the option open to potentially do something face-to-face, you know, maybe for six days in August, just to get kids back in and connected with teachers before the actual summer school starts. Tanya's been running a boost-up like that for her building. It's been invite-only at this point, but we would potentially open that up at the elementary just to get kids back in and 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 also maybe provide an opportunity for teachers just to interact with them and and make that connection. But again, everything is really up in the air, and we are are following those updates as they come. And again, just trying to keep everybody informed. What we know, but at the same time, kind of kind of like our snow days, you know, you really, we're following the same information that all of you have in terms of those updates at the state level. Waiting to see, hoping everyone will continue to practice social distancing so that we're able to to move forward.
Thank you, Mary. Our next item of information is our open enrollment counts.
And we just wanted you to see the updated numbers as they come in, again, realizing that our open window has been extended through the end of May.
All of our numbers have increased. Looks like are many of them. Really good news. Okay. Next, Mary, do you have anything to say about the Friend of Public Schools Award Committee?
Just that we want to find out if we have some board members who are interested in connecting with me virtually, so that we can make a recommendation to the full board in June, which has been our practice in the past. So if there's anyone who's interested in in meeting with me, so we can discuss that, that would be amazing. Anyone interested? I know Andy, I think you've done that in the past. I think Tom has.
Mary, you can put me down as one.
Okay.
I'd be interested, Mary.
Okay, so Nate and Gary, anyone else? All right.
Mary.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd love to join you if there's room.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Okay, we're now into operations reports. I always enjoy reading these. And the amount of stuff that our schools are doing, our face-to-face schools that are doing virtually, seeing that is it continues to amaze and and humble me. If there are questions for the principals, now is a good time to ask. I was particularly interested in the Rube Goldberg activity and the math tutoring information from Ms. Riley. And it should not be overlooked that Randy is a up-and-coming TikTok star.
I would agree with that, Gary.
Thank you. Good to be known for something, right?
Okay, that brings us to curriculum department highlights for May. If there are any questions for Chrissy, now is a good time. I just want to mention, I'm very excited about the virtual summer school plans and the summer reading and arts supply plans. It's really fantastic. Thank you for putting that together.
Thank you, Gary.
Um, we always have an interim budget report for the general fund. Uh, if there are questions for Jonah about that, now is a good time. Okay, we'll move on to the food service report. And I guess we don't really have all of the numbers in yet. But you've presented as much as you can.
I think the food service is, is running with at least $30,000 net income right now. But it's, it is hard to make predictions right now because we are behind on our invoices, so that report definitely shows inflated numbers.
Okay, but again, the oops, my dog has returned, and she's excited about it. Uh, sorry about that. The, um, our food service contract is a guaranteed, it's a guarantee to be in the black, and that's, and you expect that to continue, or to come to fruition, I guess.
Yeah, um, I think so. The, you know, the guarantee was for that, they, they did guarantee the $20,000. But we are kind of determining what our food prices are gonna be, and so uh, you know, kind of going forward, we were talking about keeping meal places, meal prices flat for next year. Avians might advise us to increase them by 3% or something like that, but we've got, you know, we've got multiple goals, and I think one of our goals next year is gonna be to try to support our students through the food service program as much as possible. Um, and so I think keeping meal prices flat next year is, is good, even if we don't have a $20,000 net income at the end of the year. Um, so I mean, you know, we're trying to weigh different, uh, different things, but I think we're gonna be just fine. We, we built up a fun balance last year. We're gonna add to it, I think, this year, and, um, you know, so it's just keeping all these things in mind.
That makes sense to me, Jonah. Thank you very much. Any other thoughts about the food service report? Okay, I think that brings us to the end of our open session. We're now gonna have to vote on convening and closed session. So I would accept the motion to do so. So moved.
And seconded by Betsy. I think David had the first, and I had the second.
Gotcha. Okay. Uh, thank you, David and Betsy. Call for the vote to adjourn to closed session. Thank you. That vote passes unanimously, and the open session is adjourned. I want to remind board members that there's a different Google Meet location for our closed session. So please check your email, your district email account for that link. I want to thank everybody for attending our open session. And board members, I'll see you at the closed session meeting in a minute or two. Jolene, are you gonna end this meeting?
Yes, Gary, I'll go ahead and, and stop recording and log out myself.
Thank you.
Yep.